Recorded. Thank you Kelvin on cue. Well, good evening and my name is Andrew Robbin. I'm the referee officials chair for Ontario and it's so delighted. We're delighted to have you here. October the 5th, a little bit later than we wanted to, but of course there were a lot of behind the scenes still waiting on information and we didn't want to have a meeting too early and then you know send out information thereafter. It doesn't mean we're going to have all of the the information at on hand tonight, but um you know with the O U A that's beginning in a in a couple of weeks, it was important to get out in front of you. So this is our third addition, hard to believe, third edition of our referee town hall meeting. We had the first back last September and then another one in December. We certainly would have wanted to, you know, have you in person at your respective regions. But you know with COVID now entering month number 19, obviously it just wasn't wasn't possible. So I I hope that you and your families are doing well, had enjoyed your summer and and fingers crossed that you're we're ready for an excellent 2021, 2022. So we'll just go into the referee kickoff meeting and the the agenda for this evening. It's going to be pretty, pretty lengthy. But sorry, gonna talk have our introductions over do a little housekeeping in memoriam governance update, COVID 19 updates, membership and registration, indoor competitions and rules update, and then some awards and and recognition. So with me, very delighted to have the referee committee members here. So we have our operations chair of Andy Cameron, programs chair Jason Dodd. The quality assurance chair is Bob Rock. We have the regions represented, region one, kind of a duo, Al Kachuk and Tony Cucirello. From region two, Brian Wrencourt. Region three, we've got Samara Savour. Region four, Lynn Watkins. Please guys, put yourselves on mute, please. Region five, Jennifer Adams. Region six, Arena Zamboni. And beach referee chair, John Gillis. You guys hearing all that background there as well?
Yes, someone's someone's mic is turned on here. Yeah.
Please put yourselves on on mute. And then so from a O V A staff, we're very pleased to have our executive director Joanne Lubitschek. We have our director of volleyball operations, Alicia Liddams. We will have our manager of indoor programs, Carrie Campbell. And then our operation lead and my right hand man Kelvin Chang. So very fortunate to have you guys with us this evening. We're going to have opportunity for for questions and what we're asking is you either put it in the chat or we will open it up and allow you to ask a question after each section. So we'll go through our different sections and then at the end, if you want more information confirmation, then we will certainly entertain that. If you do not feel comfortable asking it in the the chats or you know, or putting up your hand, that that's fine. If you want to, you know, contact your R R C at a later time and by oh no, absolutely, that's not a problem. Okay. So again, mute yourself and turn off any ringers. Next, please Kelvin. All right. So we had a we lost a few people in our our family this past year. And we'll start off with Ed Yu, who was a national indoor and a national beach referee. Very instrumental with the e-score sheet. I've been a referee for for many years. Mojas Lorbergs was also a national indoor referee. And he was responsible for me where I am today. He was my clinician back in September 1990. And then we also lost Tony Tobacco, level two referee, coach. Just one of the finest individuals that you will come across. And I know we've lost other, you know, extended family members and hearts go out to all of you who are have been affected and suffered any loss over this past year, year and a half.
Sorry, Andrew, I just want to jump in. Kelvin, we can't see your screen if you're supposed to be sharing right now.
Yeah, because I I can see it on my end.
I can see it on mine, too.
Me, too.
All right, apparently I'm.
I can't see.
So you guys can see?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
I can see it.
Perfect. Moving on. Just want to do a little quick year in 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 review and I'll talk about some other items along the way as well, but you know, we are the committee was working really hard over this pandemic. That was one good thing. We pretty much met on a monthly or bimonthly basis, either as a committee or our subcommittees. So we did get our level one online theory. It is up and running. More information is still going to be coming out to our clinicians. I know they're excited as well. So stay tuned for that. I'm going to talk about the beach at the end. One of the subcommittees we had was the recruitment and retention. That was very important on two fronts, obviously. Retention, knowing that we're going to lose people over the last year and have those that may have only been with us for a year or two. You know, having that volleyball out of your lives for that period of time, they moved on to other things, other interests, other hobbies. And then some of our older referees who are choosing not to to come back. So we made a push to at least have our senior referees reach out and and call our referees just to see, you know, their interest and 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 what they were looking to do for the upcoming season. If you know, they were planning on on whistling again. And then recruitment, you know, the best of times we lose people. You know, it's hard. We're trying to always catch up. We have no problems in getting our level ones through the program, but we pretty much lose them. It's the same amount throughout the year. And with the sport of volleyball that's growing, we're trying to keep up. So a big push on on recruitment as well. So you're going to get to see a lot of those efforts, whether it's on social media or at different events where we're having a big push for that. And we're not, we're not alone. You look at any other sport, whether it's soccer or basketball, they are in the same boat. And it's been, it's been tough. And so, you know, we've recognized that, but we're getting out in front of that. But let's talk volleyball rules. It was important to continue the conversation. And even though we were not whistling, we were having pretty much monthly chats with Guy and our international referees, both on the indoor and beach. And we found that to be quite successful. There were some webinars that were coming out of Volleyball Canada. They had four this past year and we are looking to continue with that as well. From a a beach standpoint, at least we were able to get out on the beach. It's I want to applaud the the O V A and their efforts. We had a total of 314 tournaments that were scheduled. Many of them were half days due to to COVID. But we got them up and running between May 15th and August 8th. And even managed to have O Cs. So it was it was, you know, for those of you who participated, it was nice seeing everyone down at Ash Bridges for two weekends of of O Cs. And you know, we also had 13 different venues throughout the province. And so I know the athletes were appreciative and so that was really, really a a highlight. I want to thank John and more importantly, I would say Kelvin Ying for his assigning abilities to, you know, manage everything. So thank you very much. So um, that's, you know, essentially it's for the the year in in review again, but we'll talk about some more items along the way. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Joanne and she's going to enlighten us on our governance update. So Joanne.
Thank you. And thanks for having me. This is exciting. I I can't imagine another something more exciting than kicking off a volleyball season. It's been way too long. So thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. I have some kind of boring topics, but very important. So bear with me as I know you have a lot of stuff to get to so you can get back on the field of play and get the whistles going in the gyms and the athletes can't wait. So I do want to say, I really appreciate everyone taking the time to learn and hear about all of these COVID rules, protocol. Without you, we wouldn't be able to run. I mean, if we don't follow these rules, we don't get to rent these facilities. So thanks for helping out on that and making sure that you stay safe, the athletes are safe, our coaches. Maybe, maybe there will be spectators. We don't know. But I just want to really express that, that there is a lot of rules. There is a lot to know about just protocol things. So and it will be different from venue to venue, facility to facility. So I understand the struggle with that. But I mean, the athletes could be happier that they actually get to play. I mean, that's all I've been getting from the clubs and the coaches and the athletes. So thank you. So I'm going to get into another piece that governance always gets thrown at us at this time of year, which is we're trying to kick off a new season that uh, the regional meetings kind of get lost. So I just wanted to do a little plug to get our referees involved because we are changing our bylaws. So we have a proposal out of some bylaw changes. Some of this comes from because there is now a Ontario Not-for-Profit Corporations Act that has now come into play and we need to be in compliance with it. Also, there's a Canadian sport governance code that has really looked at what the best practices are for sport organizations to be running their governance under. So we've also been able to look to those best practices and be able to align with Volleyball Canada's governance and how the national sport organizations are to run. So with those combined, those two things, along with just housekeeping, because our bylaws are old, we have some changes to the bylaws. They're positive changes that really gets rid of a very archaic voting delegate system that exists. So find out more about it. Come to your regional meeting. Run to be a voting delegate. So on November 7th, you can vote whether or not you would like to have these new changes for the bylaws, because under our current structure, you have to be a voting delegate in order to vote on November 7th. Keep in mind, if we change our bylaws, our December 12th A G M will now eliminate that delegate voting system and all members will be able to vote. So we need some of you to join in and do the November 7th voting. So we can now, on a go forward basis, have all of our members eligible to vote at our A G Ms and not that delegate system. So one thing I just want to point out is that with these new bylaws, we are also getting some athlete representation into our governance. We're actually getting the regional council and the regional model into a committee format that will be a lot more robust and flexible in order for them to run. So there's just a lot of good positive changes in that. And there's lots of documents that'll be going out. So stay tuned to the news and checking on the date of when your regional meeting is. So that is my governance update plug and please send me any questions you have on it. And I think they also now want me to talk about vaccines. They've given me the really, really fun topics. So I will continue on. Um, and Kelvin will give me the next slide because I can see the slides, Alicia.
So I just like Andrew so much. I had him pinned to my screen. I was like, there's no presentation, you guys. Go on, member, go on.
Working way too long. Okay. So Ontario vaccine, as we all know, and there's some certain settings where it's a requirement as of September 22nd in the province, there's a very good guidance document. These are the links in these in in this document. We're anxiously waiting October 22nd, hoping we get a really good digital certificate product system for Ontario. So we're still waiting to see what that looks like, but that will be in a couple more weeks. So give me the the next slide Kelvin and we'll get into some of the details of it. So some of the things that we just wanted you to be aware of. And I appreciate because I know some of you joined our town hall. So awesome job on the on getting to know how all the rules around vaccine. As we said, every facility is going to be different. So we don't. So it'll it'll be the instructions for each facility, whether the facility is checking, whether the club that's running the event or the O V A event staff are hosting, who has to check the vaccine requirement if if it's required. The important part with this is that really take note that it's upon entry. So even when you're going to go into your your O U A game, even though you've provided Kelvin your vaccine receipt, you will have to show your proof of vaccine in order to get on to into that gym at any university or college. So keep that in mind that it's not just because you've already provided it. The the regulations state that it's upon proof of entry. So no one has a choice. They have to check it upon proof of entry. So they can't give you any exceptions. Throw me the next one there Kelvin. So this gives into the detail of what makes up a full vaccine. And so, I mean, we can all laugh at some of them. It's like, maybe it's one, maybe it's two, but as long as then you get an M R A, then you're good. So if the details are here, so check to make sure that you do have your full vaccine series. I'm sure you've done that already, especially if you're going to be refereeing in the O U A. If you have any questions, the ministry website is very good. You can, as you know, you can print your receipt, download them even before the the digital certificate comes out. As we talked about, the proof vaccine has to be checked upon entry. Keep in mind, health screening still has to be done, contact tracing information still has to be provided. So if you refuse to provide, they cannot let you in and none of your information can be retained. So that's another, just an important part of that. The receipts, like no one can keep it. Kelvin's collecting yours and then destroying it. And also that's where the the digital one will come into play because you'll just show it and then be able to enter. The is there anything else on this slide that I wanted to to touch on? I think that's it, but it's it is just back to upon entry and health screening is still required and contact tracing because we're still in step three. There are some exemptions. Um, yeah, there's medical exemptions. So if a physician or nurse has provided a written document, there is some exemptions to a vaccine requirement. Also, though, that can come with a time period. So there may have been just a time period where someone couldn't get their vaccine because of a certain medical condition, but then now they're able to get it. And so then they have a certain extended time to be able to get that. There's different different reasons. And as we know, 12 years, under 12 years, it's just not approved yet, but it's coming. Um, this couldn't be a more confusing table. Um, so the way the government regulations came out, they did give an exact not require athletes under 18 years of age that are participating in an organized sport. They were not required to provide their proof of vaccination. But if those same athletes go in and they're going to go do a weight training or join a fitness class, they would need to show proof of vaccination. So very confusing. Um, this is where those are the government regulations, but keep in mind that facilities or local public health units are making requirements for vaccinations. So we already have York region has required athletes, no matter what, under 18 in organized sport to provide proof of vaccination. The other different piece that comes up is whether coaches and officials are are required. So as you know, O U A, O C W A, you're going to go over all your service organizations where it's required. The but the government regulation, there are some places where some coaches and officials aren't required. So again, you have to know facility by facility, event by event, whether or not the proof of vaccination is required or not. And this is where Kelvin and the team will give you all that information of what you need. And I know Alicia already even knows for O Cs that it's required. So for coaches and officials. So athletes are still like, okay, well, maybe here they're okay, maybe here they're not, but at Rim Park and both Paramount Fine Foods, all anyone working the event, coaches and officials, our staff will all need to be vaccinated and that's those are the city rules. That I'm sure there's questions on that, but feel free to ask us. So some further requirements to keep in mind. The guidance document does provide the baseline and lots of detail. Public health units, businesses, organizations can establish their own policies. And that's why, for example, as we talked about the O C W A, O U A, the the York region, public health, they're all mandating the vaccination. If you are hockey official, G T Chel, L M H A, they're all they're all requiring it. So you can use your paper copy from September 22nd up to October 22nd. And then the launch of the enhanced digital vaccine vaccine certificate should make it really easy with the Q R code. And then the, as we said, as you know, send your stuff to Kelvin, he'll get you uploaded and then he destroys, he doesn't keep any of your your receipts, but you still need to provide your receipt upon entry into any of the facilities that will require it. This is just a reminder, we're still in step three. So there's still a lot of return to play protocols that must be followed in order for volleyball to happen. So these rules keep our sport going. Every every facility in order to rent it, the the club, the O V A, anyone, we have to provide a safety plan. Our safety plan includes all of the return to play protocols and that they're being followed. And so this is where again, I'm like, thank you because your the referees are a huge help on helping to keep those those rules in check. And so because if we don't follow the required return to play, we won't be able to rent these facilities, which again, we know that means we can't play. So physical distancing is still a requirement and wearing masks, except for when the athletes are active. So referees, coaches, they all still need to have masks on. They need to physical distance best they can. Obviously, we know that sometimes it's a challenge in a business facilities, but you really have to make an effort and the safety plans have to be able to demonstrate that we can control the crowd and keep people separated. So we really do need an effort in that, that the people do keep somewhat separated. And the I think there was some discussion around the hand whistle for you guys or the mask. And we're just like, yeah, go for it. If you want to use the mask with the whistle, no problem or a hand whistle. Okay, um, I think that's awesome. I'm if you have any of the COVID questions, just, you know, let me know. Thanks.
Hey, Joe, sorry. We have a question about timeouts and athletes wearing masks since you're talking about that topic right now. Andrew, one of you, do you want to answer that? During timeouts, should athletes be wearing masks?
Not during a timeout.
Not not the players that are are playing. No, the the players that are off need to wear their masks, but the the players that are in the match do not have to put on their mask.
Yeah, and just from the and and just to keep just some of the overall rules. So remember even indoors, you're allowed to remove your mask to eat and drink. So if a player is sitting on a bench, having a glass, having, you know, some of their their water, that's fine. That's why even during a timeout, the athletes are drinking, they're listening to the coach. They should try to stay somewhat spaced out, but as we know, they're already playing on the court. So just keep in mind the overall rules that are in place and and just be reasonable from from that standpoint. But I know that Alicia and her team and Andrew, there'll be a lot of match protocol rules that you guys will deal with. And so that's that's the piece that we'll just try to keep more the basis of physical distance and masks on when not in active play. Thanks.
Yep, there's another question as well about how scorekeeping will work by keeping distances. So like Joe mentioned, with the regulations and modifications to everything. We're asking to have two tables. So we have, you know, the six feet between each people, the person flipping and the person doing the score sheet. So and that is what we are asking for all facilities.
Okay, Alicia, was that it for questions for now before I move on to the next session? Okay, so.
If I missed anything, sorry, just retype it. Thanks.
Awesome. So the next section that we're going to be covering is membership and registration. So for this year, for the O V A membership, we are recommending that referees register by October 10th if they are working O U A and O C W A events and by October 25th, if they are working O V A events. We're asking everyone to register as things seem to be improving and opening up slowly but surely. And as well, we also need the turnaround time to send everyone their e-whistle, masks and purple cards all included as part of your membership fee this year. So for registration, some of you may have already seen the site already. We have a new registration system. So if you didn't register last season, you will need to create a new account. Your old email username and password will not work as that was not saved from the old system. If you're actual registering, contact Sherry Bennett. Her email is at the bottom of that slide and then she'll be able to help you out. So for the next slide, we have the information about uploading your vaccination receipts. So as we alluded to earlier, the O V A is not mandating mandating vaccinations for its members. However, like Joanne said, many of the leagues and organizations that we do assign for such as O C W A, T D S B, York region and some school boards are mandating that participants be fully vaccinated in order to enter the facility. We also learned that today Downsview will be doing the same. So we're planning to run some beach events there. So everyone over 12 will need to be fully vaccinated. As part of our agreement with these organizations and leagues and as a role as a service provider, we've agreed to track the vaccination status of our referees where necessary and assign accordingly. The last thing that we want is to assign someone that would be denied entry upon arrival. And that is not an ideal situation for anyone. A few weeks ago, with that said, we sent out a link to all referees where they can upload their proof of I D document as well as their vaccination receipts. Once I see that information, I destroy it and then we update our records for our signers. If you are eligible for a medical exemption, please email me directly to let me know. So as always, we have to screen our referees through a screening process. We all require all referees to complete the police check and screening form. Police checks can be done every three years and the O V A screening form has to be updated annually. Police checks can be done through my back check using the link on the slide. It is all done online. It's pretty convenient. It's less expensive and it's a lot easier than going through your actual police station. O V A referees will also need to submit an updated form using the link below. It's a form stack link. And then if you submitted a full form within the last three years, you can submit a renewal one, which is the shorter version of the form. And last but not least, last year, Uh, and last but not least, uh, last year, uh, Coach Canada's Safe Sport Module was made mandatory for all referees. This is online as well. Um, it's free and takes about an hour to complete. It can be done through the locker and uh if you don't already have an account, you'll need to create one first and then do the module through your account. Please note that if you already did it uh last year, you don't need to do it again this year. Um, so you don't need to complete it once. And I'll pass it back to Andrew, uh, and then he's going to talk about our new badges and the uniform for this year.
Any any questions for for Kelvin before I move on to the next uh next item?
There was just some clarification Ryan was looking in terms of um the regulations for Ontario. So the regs actually exempt. And it doesn't make sense. Soon as we read it, we're like, this doesn't make sense. But referees, volunteers and coaches, even if they're over eighteen years of age, are exempt from providing proof of vaccination and identification at the door. Um, so it is up to the facilities if they're checking that or not. And like Joy and mentioned Paramount Fine Food Center, one of our locations for Ontario Championships requires it. Um, right now Rim Park doesn't require it, but things may change. Um, so right now, even though that part of the regulations do not make sense, that's actually in the laws. So um, that's what we're working with. Sorry.
Thanks, Alicia. Any other questions on before we move on? Okay, so um the new badges are coming. The the new crests are coming. They've been held up uh in in Ottawa. We were hoping to to have them by now uh to mail them out with those uh or to those that have already uh registered. Uh, they are on uh on route uh to uh Kelvin's place as a matter of fact. So uh we will get those uh out to you. Uh, and in the meantime, if they if they haven't arrived, yes, you'll be wearing your your old uh badge. Uh, but what you will not be wearing uh is your old uniform. So the new uniform has come into effect. Uh, for some of us, it may feel like that was just yesterday, but in fact, uh, it's been four years in the making. And so uh as of September one, twenty twenty one, twenty two, uh, the new uniform is in effect. Uh, for those that are still wearing uh the old uniform, please uh contact uh Volleyball Canada uh to purchase them. Okay. Uh, rulebooks uh will not uh be mailed out. Uh, we've made the decision uh not to uh send out a rulebook uh for a couple reasons. Um, number one, uh, there's really one small uh update uh to to the rulebook, so it didn't didn't make sense. Uh, you know, secondly, we have replaced that um with the electronic whistle that is being mailed uh to everyone in their in their package as it is a a requirement uh to go with the electronic uh whistle, both at the O V A, uh, O U A and the and the O C W A. Uh, rulebooks will be uh given to those that that register. And uh if you are looking to to purchase a rulebook, then that would be done through uh Volleyball Canada. From a certification and and upgrade uh standpoint, we still have uh a few referees that are in the uh the second year of the of the R U P. And so we want to uh move them along and uh we're hoping uh to 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 run a a clinic uh for the R U P this year. You uh for those that were those that are level twos, you would have received an email uh from the O V A. Uh, you know, being very, very transparent, so it's a a different process. Uh, for those that are interested in entering the the R U P and a decision uh will be uh communicated uh by by November one. If anything changes, uh, we'll let you know. We're also playing catch up uh with the N U P uh just to give you uh an idea that as a province, we're permitted uh five candidates at any one time. Uh, Ontario is the only province in Canada that actually has uh five referees that are in the program. We have three that are in their the the last year and would have been uh at the Nationals last year and and two that are are year one. We will be uh, we do have the opportunity to go beyond that five uh knowing that it's been a little uh chaotic and uh we shouldn't be penalized. Uh, however, uh, we're we're not going to be running a a theory a session for the N U P this year. Anyway, uh, we're hoping to get back on on track for for next year. We made the decision not to uh run a a a level two uh P U P. We don't know again what it's going to look like in terms of uh gyms and events and uh didn't feel that um it was in the 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 best interest um at this time uh to to run that uh uh the P U P. So uh, you know, we'll get back on on track for for next year. And again, I need to, you know, plug our 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 level one uh clinic. And um, I guess, once again, I should really thank too uh Brittany Saunders and Kennedy Ramsden, Brad Gerardo uh and Ryan McDoom for for their work, uh for their tireless work and they're continuing to work. So I I gotta shout them out. Those four were uh just amazing uh at what they have put together uh for a level one. Uh, so again, it's online. Uh, what we are going to be doing as well, those that are are a little leery of getting back onto the courts, uh, only been in the game for a year or two or so and just want a refresher, we're providing a a refresher. So uh, it's very sleek, the uh, you know, the the online course. And so I believe that it has been added in the in the chat. If not, I know uh Kelvin will, but uh it's an opportunity to uh go through that and just get a little uh uh refresher. Uh, and you know, also to to thank uh Brittany and Kenny, they're also working on the beach. So we've done the indoor and now we're moving towards that the beach. And uh those two have graciously uh taken on that as as well, uh being beach referees. So thank you to those to the ladies. All right, uh, also well, before any any questions before I send this on to, I believe, Carrie's with us now. Any any questions for me on that?
We did have some questions just around like the sizing of uniforms and is everything listed up on the V C website? Like, can people go in there and take their measurements? Because, you know, some of us may not fit into uniforms that we fit into two years ago, COVID twenty.
I I I I have found that the the new uniforms, especially the pants, are very uh very flexible, very um forgiving. And so uh, you know, uh, you know, based on your, you know, whatever pant size you are, you should be fine. I can't speak to the to the ladies and and the and the and the pants, but uh um uh for the men anyway, I I know it wasn't uh wasn't an issue. And then for the shirt, the sizes are the same. If you're an extra large, you're going to be an extra large. If you're small, you're small.
Perfect. And do you know if there's going to be any sales from Volleyball Canada on the uniforms or like bulk purchasing options for reps of a certain area or anything like that?
Uh, I haven't, I have not heard that from from the from Volleyball Canada, so fortunately I couldn't speak to that.
All righty.
Uh, I think I see something from Kennedy to uh had to go up two sizes in the pants to fit. Woman's shirt is short. Yeah, that's right. I did hear that. So, yeah, I mean, okay, so there you have it for our females on the on the line. Um, take heed from your fellow colleagues. So thank you.
Um, I'm delinquent with my uniform. Sorry, Alicia. So if anybody needs me to check sizing, since I'm in Ottawa and I have to make a pit stop to Volleyball Canada, I will happily take my old uniforms. I have the men's sizes for everything, so I should be able to gauge quickly for you guys uh what that looks like and maybe I can get Kelvin to send an update to everybody. And just a heads up, there are a couple of things V C is carrying. So people were asking about electronic whistles in general, if they wanted extras. V C does have some. They're not available as far as I know on the E store. I did look, but they might have some in stock on site. We do have it on the O V A store as well. Yeah, so don't buy it because if you register with O V A, you will get your electronic whistle. Um, and then on that note, I had a couple of people ask me about badges because they've misplaced their current logo, not the new logo. Don't order badges because we're going to be getting the new ones out shortly. So you don't need your old badge for the time being. That is all.
Correct. Good stuff. Thanks. Thanks, Serena. Yeah, so again, uh, want to emphasize that you will be, once you register, you will be getting one from the O V A. If you are looking for extras, uh, the O V A also has extras. I haven't consulted with them, but I'm going to go ahead and 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 say that. Hopefully, I I'm not uh speaking out of turn. So, okay, good.
Um, another question, this is about uh O V A, O U A, O C W A. We may have answered this, uh, wearing the whistle mask or uh whistle gator if they buy it directly from Fox Forty versus using the e-whistle. And yes, for O V A and everything, it's fine. Uh, we did make a recommendation to O U A and O C W A that they uh are able to, you guys will be able to use that as well there. Um, Andrew and I actually have a conversation with the O U A tomorrow and we'll bring it up with them. And if anything else differs from what we're telling you now, we will let you guys know. Sorry, I'm just going through. There's lots of things popping up now. It's all about sizes and uniforms. Did I miss anything? I think we're good. Oh, is there a timeline for e-whistles to be sent? Um, so Kelvin, you've been doing soon as memberships um are registering, you're kind of checking every day and you have pre-addressed labels and envelopes at your house and you're shipping them out uh kind of on a daily basis. So stay tuned in the mail. If you don't have it, like Kelvin, no.
Yeah, and I'll and I'll be covering off more of that information when we uh speak uh about the the O V A rules and what have you, so.
Perfect. Okay, awesome. I will, I think, move forward.
All right. So now I think it's Carrie's up, uh, Ms. Campbell or is she here?
Right here.
Ah, one, goodie. How are you, my dear?
I'm good. How's everybody?
Good, good. Thank you. Nice to see you. All right, Carrie, the floor is yours.
Okay, uh, well, everybody, we've got a a bit of a new start to our competition season for November and December. Um, so we originally planned to start off with our regular season in November as usual with our tournaments, nine on threes. However, um permits seem to be an issue. Um, school boards are taking a very cautious approach to reissuing permits and um there's really um not much out there and not all school boards are even open right now. So just to kind of give you guys a heads up of where we're at right now, um currently, we only have one hundred and sixty nine facilities books from November to March uh for the indoor season and traditionally around this time, we have seven hundred plus. So um, and it's not for a lack of trying. Um, Mark and Caitlin have been, you know, uh, busting their butts trying to find facilities. Unfortunately, they're just not permitting and they're not permitting for specific uses. So um, that being said, there's a lack of consistency among the school boards with when they are um issuing permits. Um, they're limiting activities, they're reducing time blocks, um even um days per week, one permit holder can have. Um, there's also vaccination requirements. You know, it really depends on what area you are in to be allowed to access these facilities. Uh, for instance, uh, York Region has Institute of Vaccination Policy for everybody uh twelve and up. Um, so and I think London has two as well. I'm not hundred percent sure. I can't remember, but you know, it's just varying across the board. Um, so we are going to be doing um a league format for our early contacted uh streams as well as up to our sixteen new competition. Um, however, the one hundred and sixty nine or the facilities we have booked from November and December, we are going to slot in our eighteen U and seventeen U competitions um in traditional tournament format. So um, just that's a little brief synopsis of what we're going through right now. Um, so, yeah, so seventeen, eighteen U tournaments will run at the private facilities the O V A has booked from November and in December. They range in um from the D G T A to Durham, so those are kind of where um our main facilities are. Two eighteen U tournaments will take place, um, one per month um in twenty twenty one and in one seventeen U. So that means that come around January for the seventeen and eighteen U's, we will roll right into the regular calendar that we have planned for them. So um, no changes to the January calendar, just November and December for our seventeen and eighteen U's. Um, early contact and sixteen U will be moving to league play. Leagues will try to run from November eighteenth to December twelfth. So once everybody is registered and we split everybody into their groupings or cohorts, they'll have those weeks around six weeks to kind of get everything up and running and their um their league play matches. Um, league play hopefully will take place during club book to gym time. So um, we're hoping that these groupings can get together and schedule their matches and um do that on their own. Um, just because we can't do it on, we don't have the capacity of the facilities to do that on our end. So we really need them to kind of um use their resources and use their gym times. Um, we will be working with clubs to bring um teams together at facilities we have booked as well in November and December outside of those seventeen and eighteen U events I mentioned earlier. Um, we will be requiring referees for the tournaments and and league play matches. And um, we are going to be working closely with our clubs and the assigners to try to directly book officials for this these matches. Um, so it's going to be a bit hairy. I'm not going to lie here. I'm not going to candy coat it. Um, but this is kind of what we need to do to get um our sport up and running right now. So um, we are requesting if an official um it for our teams to give at least um a week's notice for their matches to the assigners to make sure that we can get um get bodies on the stands. Um, but it may be a bit of a time crunch depending on the resources of the clubs and on the stability of their permits and and things like that. So um we can do it, though. So we'll be working, we'll be helping. Mark, Caitlin and I will all be helping our team staff and working closely with the um assigners and the R C Cs just to make sure that these matches are covered as smoothly as possible. So on October seventh, we are going to have a full overview of the changes to the youth competition season. So please tune in um and um you can get a better idea of what is actually. Well, it's going to be the nitty gritty, so um it'll be good to know and you kind of get a better idea of what November and December will look like for those uh early contact to sixteen U age divisions. Um, yeah, so um, so early contact starts this year. Exciting. Um, so this will be for athletes born twenty seven, uh, two thousand and seven and under. Um, quick name changes here. So rally ball is triple ball. Um, it's just a a little rebrand. So um, we feel it better reflects the game and, you know, hopefully gets more people uh excited about it. So our twelve U division will now be playing four V four rally ball. Um, our thirteen U division will now be named six V six rally ball. And fourteen U is now called uh Traditional Land Specialized or T N S for short. Um, have a look at um our website under early contact. It's a great resource for coaches and anybody who's interested um to kind of figure out um why we've started the early initiative, what age divisions are eligible and even gives you a little synopsis of the rules and and some of the changes that that will be happening. Um, and these are our shiny new balls. So finally, we get to play with them. So four V four rally ball, we'll be playing with the M V A light. We're all familiar with that. Um, Karish Mirage, our O V A staff designed our new um com- competition ball for up to fifteen U. Um, and then we will be playing with the V two hundred W for the sixteen U to eighteen U. Apparently, they're doing well and and the 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 balls are being met with enthusiasm. Okay, rule changes.
Carrie, I have a few questions first, actually. Um, so just about the league play in terms of will there be multiple matches at a time? Or is it kind of like a one and done match each evening?
So it might be a variety of things. It might be a one and done. It might have, you know, a a gym that an uh club can get for an afternoon, so we can have two league matches. Um, matches, I just saw something pop up. There will be two out of three. Um, so it all depends on the gyms that they have available and what they're able to manage. So anything that is So anything that is booked through us for league play matches outside of those seventeen and eighteen new events that I talked about, we hope to have chunks of play. So, um, it's not going to be one and dones, it's going to be teams coming in and out to get their, their matches. Whether it's a whole cohort playing in the one morning and a different cohort playing in the afternoon, we'll have to wait and see who's, who needs that gym space. So, um, I can let you know that our, your RCCs and assigners will have access to a a Google document that lets them know the status of our OVA booked facilities. So they might have a better heads up of, of those things and, and get them assigned a little quicker than the other league matches that will be, will be scheduled for everybody else.
Yeah, and like Carrie mentioned, I think earlier too, it's so different from each school board to school board. You know, like we're hearing it in Thames Valley with their graduated return where you're getting two hour chunks of times for one team and they can't even do anything with train right now. And then you have like T D S being Toronto Catholic that have just released that they're starting to do weekend permits and evening permits. And it doesn't look like there's going to be any restrictions on matches. So that's good to hear. But it really varies and there's not a lot of consistency from different school boards to school boards. So we're trying to work within the parameters that, you know, we're all facing. And obviously, we're not the only sport that's dealing with this as well. Anyone that needs indoor court spaces is suffering greatly. So it has you pivot and adapt the programming to fit within what is available to us. So we want to play, this is what we're doing for now. And fingers crossed, our gyms are open and we're ready to go in January twenty twenty-two.
And these, um, these leagues will be counted towards your January start. So we are hoping that there is going to be a good participation in them. So, um, yeah, we're hoping, you know, realistically, we don't have results for like full results until like goodness, eight, what is it? Two thousand eighteen nineteen is our last year of full results. We're actually ranking this year on twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And they aren't even full results for some age divisions. And it's only regular student season play and not Ontario championships. So, um, we really hope that pushing this league play will honestly be a better start for January for competition and kind of getting an idea where everybody stands and, and competitive balance and all that. So it's really important for us that we're able to offer something come before January.
Alicia, was there anything else before we move on to rule changes?
Not really, just some comments, um, just about, you know, being very fluid for the season again and just to try to do whatever we can to make it happen. So, and to meet, I am not reading your comment because we'll make it, hopefully it's happening.
Good juju out there, guys. Good vibes, only.
Come on, Dee.
I can enunciate, let the teacher enunciate, sir. For Wired D S B, the intel that I have is that volleyball is unlikely to happen. And this is for elementary. Uh, I'm not sure about secondary, but I would imagine that's, you know, secondary panel and elementary panel are communicating regarding whether or not volleyball and any sports would be happening. So hate to be the bearer of bad news, sorry.
Snow volleyball is still a volleyball.
Well, fingers crossed. I still have hope, can't give up. Who do I have to talk to? Okay, real changes.
All right, so, uh, for the, the youth competitions, this is what we will be dealing with. And, uh, and, and don't worry, we're going to have like a, a little cheat sheet that we will be providing to, to everyone. As this is going to be, you know, uh, new to, to all of us. So for the, uh, the coin toss, uh, there will only be two options. And that is going to be to either to serve or to receive. There will not be any changing of the, the courts. Unless there is a huge disadvantage. But I really don't foresee that. So let's make sure that common sense pervades here. But, uh, you know, so at the toss, and of course, you are all wearing, you're wearing your, your mask. The, uh, the, the two captains, they can, you know, give a little, you know, dap or whatever with their hand, there's no shaking of, of hands. Try and, you know, maintain the, the distance as, as, as best as you can. But again, uh, just you're going to be asking to serve or to receive. No side changes, whether it's two out of three, three out of five at all, right? So that's pretty much been taking place, I would say, outside of the Olympics. That's what all the competitions have been, have been doing. Electronic mask or the, the Fox Forty must be used by every referee. If you have registered a little bit later and then were assigned and the electronic whistle has not reached you, then you can use your own whistle under the mask. That would be the only time where it would be permitted. Uh, and again, the, talk about the, the physical distancing, um, that includes the, you know, the, the scores as well. There will only be two. You know, sometimes you will see that there might be three people or whatever at a scorer's table. No, it's just going to be someone who is flipping and, and someone who is, is keeping score. So, uh, athletes are not required to wear a mask. They will be the only ones, uh, in the gym that will not be required. Those that are playing, uh, some you'll see that will be putting on their mask. Obviously, that's, that's fine. But they are the only athletes that are not required, uh, those twelve athletes on the floor. Even if there is a libero, a libero goes off, uh, he or she should put back on their, their mask. Because, uh, he or she will be, uh, in the, in the warm-up with the rest of the team. So the rest of the team that is not playing, including the coaching staff, uh, will be, uh, wearing their mask. Score sheets will be signed by the, the players and coaches. And we are encouraging refs to bring their own pen to, to sign off. And also encouraging our line judges, um, our, our referees that are going to, you know, be, be working as, as line judges to, to have their own flags. At every event, there'll be a, a safety plan and that will be identified at the specific facility. Documents will be placed, um, at the venue and we abide by that there. For further information, you can check out the website that's. Competition reminder, so the, the soft uniform rule will be in effect for the months of November and December. So essentially, at first glance, uh, we're not worried, you know, about the, the, the uniform. Some may not even have their, their numbers there. They're not going to be penalized. You know, if there is a libero, then you know, they'll need to make sure that it's at least contrasting shorts at first look. You know, if it's, one is navy black, or if one is navy blue and one is black, you know what? Again, we're going to use our, our, our common sense and, uh, we're going to allow it. We're not going to be disadvantaging, uh, any of our, uh, players. Purple card, so this may be new to, to, to some. The, the purple card was first used back in our two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty season for the seventeen and eighteen U only. Uh, I believe it was only three times we had, uh, I'd heard that it was utilized. And so essentially, um, uh, the, the purple card, we have, uh, adopted that, uh, from, from the U S and it's gone really well. And that is for, uh, you know, fans and, you know, other teams that are, are heckling and are really a nuisance. And it will be, uh, you know, penalized, uh, will penalize the team for that. Everybody will be receiving a purple card, no matter what level that you are, are working. So the purple card does come into effect, um, from, you know, age group twelve all the way up. Okay, so that will be part of your, your package. Uh, I'm not going to go through all of the, the, the rules with the, with that purple card. You can, um, find the information on, online. But essentially, right, you use that as, as a deterrent. And so you put up that, that, that purple card and the coaches to go and, and speak to that, that, uh, that fan or what have you. Now, the good thing is we may not even have fans, uh, and so that might not even be an, an issue. But just be cognizant, um, that, uh, you must, uh, take that. And it is recorded on the, the score sheet if one is given to a particular team. Something new, uh, is the, the ceiling rule. Again, something that the U S has done and it is coming, uh, to the OVA only. And I have to stress, only. This is not for college, university. I have no idea. Um, I have no idea what, uh, high schools and elementary could be doing, but this is OVA only. So essentially, a, a ball other than the serve ball will remain in play if it contacts, uh, the ceiling. There will be, uh, you know, judges, um, judges, referees judgment. If there is an object that is overhead on the, on the playing surface that is, um, less than, than two meters, again, use your, your, your judgment. If it contacts that and you feel that the player was going to be able to play it successfully, uh, then it would be a, a reserve. If the, uh, just want to go to the next one there for me, please. Thanks, Kelvin. Um, the ball is out of play. So if it is, the ball is shanked and hits the back wall, that is still a fault. If the ball is played and, and hits the, uh, the ceiling and stays on their side. So if the side A is receiving the serve, the, the player shanks the ball, goes off the ceiling, stays on their side, then it's legal and they play it back. If the ball is shanked on side A, hits the ceiling and that very next play goes over to side B, then that is a fault. So it has to remain on their own side for them to continue to play it. If there is a basketball that is, you know, from the ceiling and it hits the, uh, the basket, that would still be considered as to part of the, the ceiling and that is in play. And there's a few diagrams that are, that are coming up that will illustrate, uh, exactly what that is. So here we are, we have it here, the basket is hanging in the court and, and the ball hits it and would be playable, right? We talked about the reserve. The basket has been raised up high against the wall off of the court. Uh, and the ball hits it and this is a fault. So you see that back picture, it's against the wall. Well, that's technically hitting that, uh, the wall. That's not part of the ceiling, so that would be a fault. But you see the lower picture here, uh, if it's, the basket's raised high over the court, it's played just like it would, uh, have hit the ceiling. So hopefully that is pretty clear. Uh, uh, again, if, let's say the ball hits the ceiling and is about to cross the, the plane, but is, but is contacted by, uh, team A before team B makes contact, then that's play on. But if it's contacted by team B and it has crossed the, the, the plane, then that is a, a fault. Any questions before we move on to the O U A and O C double A regulations?
Yes, there are a bunch. Just going back to in terms of the COVID protocols, in terms of coin tosses and all that fun stuff. So we do have a multi-page document. I just clicked on the website. It's under our return to play protocol page. I just noticed that it's still the twenty twenty-one season rules. Uh, the twenty-one, twenty-two is done, it just needs to be posted. So it is there. We will send you all of the links. You can read that document. And it talks about everything from coin toss procedures, protocols to warm-up protocols and all that fun stuff. So you guys can read that at your pleasure. Yes, and specifically captains and people going up to score, people to sign off on the score sheets and do the coin tosses have to wear their masks and still remain, you know, the six feet apart from one another. So there was a question about captains being able to choose what side they want at coin toss. So in those protocols, we said no, um, basically the side you choose when you get into that gym, that's where you're staying this year and you're seeing that, you know, across international stage as well right now. So we are doing that as well with the OVA. There was questions and Joe, I don't know if you're still here. There's so many people, I don't, I can't see you, but in terms of face shields and if they're acceptable for those who can't wear a mask, we would have to check with the facilities, I believe, because based on the regulations, it really specifies the face masks and it does not mention the face shield. So Christine, we would have to follow up and get more info. We are creating an F A Q and we will get that answer and make sure we have that for you. Okay, and now, yeah.
That would go to based on the facility.
Yep.
And their public health, what they allow, right? So in that area. So again, it's just a matter of every facility, we're going to have the rules and what will be allowed and not allowed.
Thank you. Um, there's a lot of questions around enforcing the masks and the usage by coaches, by athletes, by spectators. How much of the mask-wearing are referees being asked to enforce?
Well, um, you know, unless they can provide documentation to indicate that they are exempt, they need to be wearing a mask. And I, I would say we, we are taking a, a, a hard line that only athletes. So it's, uh, we did the same thing, uh, on the beach, probably not to the same extent because we're, we're outdoors. But, uh, these are, are the guidelines. And, um, if they are, are refusing, then, uh, I, I would say we probably should not necessarily disadvantage the, the, the players, um, you know, write it down on, on, on the score sheet or what have you. But, um, you know, I, I'm not sure what else that we can do. You don't want to be in a situation where we're playing, uh, police officer and then it escalates. And then now we're, you know, uh, you know, there's physical contact and all that. I mean, we see things that are happening and I'm not here to make this, uh, political by any stretch of the imagination. But, um, you know, we, we do see what's happening out there. And so we have to be cognizant and so we need to, uh, understand that, you know what? We just politely ask and if they refuse, then maybe there will be a, a, a sanction to that team or what have you. So.
In the comments as well about, you know, the possibility utilizing the purple cards for people in the stands. And Joe, maybe you can speak more to this, but in the regulations, you know, if there is a health condition and someone is exempt from wearing a mask, that's where things are going to get tricky. So in terms of just issuing a purple card right away, I don't know if that's the best way. Because yes, most of the time people are just taking their masks off potentially. But if they do have an exemption, um, you know, sanctioning that team for someone not wearing a mask, it's going to get tricky as well. Things where it will be easier is in the tournament format. So we have budgeted to have a, uh, a COVID officer at every single tournament, OVA tournament this season. That's going to be there addressing and helping these things. So in terms of, you know, as the ref, you can say to your head ref on site, if you've noticed, hey, team B, um, there's a bunch of parents that keep taking their masks off in the crowd. Like it would be great if you can tell the COVID officer, so they're here to deal with that at the next match or whenever they're playing next. You know, just having an open lines of communication, um, because Andrew said, you know, this, a lot of the stuff can get heated very quickly. So, um, we want to deal with it the best way that we can. But, um, Andy also raised a very valid point in terms of the facility. Right now, step three, we're fifty percent capacity. So those numbers are not huge when we're looking at how many people can be inside gymnasiums. And once again, it varies from facility to facility. However, there may be, very well be spectator limitations in place for the first few months of our tournament. So this may be a moot point, but, um, you know, it's something that we have to deal with as well.
Sorry, I just, I agree. It's, it's obviously going to be, there's so many different scenarios that could come up. But it's, there could be also facility, um, also help from the facility and that can be informed. The, there is also bylaw officer, so they can be contacted. They may be checking up on facilities. So they can be contacted, they may be checking up on facilities. But we are really, really stressing and hoping the fact that our members want volleyball to stay in action the same way. The rest of us do, and if the rules aren't followed, it'll get shut down. I mean, I'm sure you all heard about the outbreak that happened at, uh, the basketball tournaments that had no protocols. And I mean, that was a matter of massive fines to the facility, um, also to the clubs. And, um, there's, it, it just means now that sport is at risk of getting shut down. So it, it's just another, it's just another, um, thing to keep in mind that all of that's being tracked as well. The outbreaks and the number of, um, um, sanctions against, um, facilities and what they're operating in, in that facility. Um, I think there was also a question about vaccine. Um, Alicia, was there, uh, just to keep on the, let's get rid of all the COVID ones, so you guys can get into the good stuff. Um, I think about checking vaccines. The vaccine is checked upon proof of entry. So that's not something that would be happen during the, the play of the game or during the day. It's, it's only upon entry into that, into that space, into that facility or that location of the, of the facility. So you shouldn't have any issue, um, when you're managing your matches or during the day at, at a tournament.
Yep, and then kind of in the same vein of that is just in terms of, uh, will host and facilities providing sanitizing equipment like sprays, wipes, gloves, et cetera. Um, so in terms of the tournament kits and packages that are going out to the clubs from the O V A. It's including, uh, the hand sanitizers and wipes and stuff like that to disinfect the balls and the, the score tables and pens and people's hands. In terms of, no, we're not providing gloves or masks. Everyone has to, if they want to wear gloves, um, bring their own. Uh, but yes, they will be the sanitizing wipes and sprays at every score table and facilities have them throughout their facilities as well. Okay. Sorry, I'm just going through to see if we haven't touched on some of this. Um, just some clarification about the ceiling rule as well. Uh, in terms of the frame that holds the basket above the court in the top picture.
Yes, so that, so that's, that's a situation if, if the, uh, the basket is, um, on the court and it's like less than, uh, two meters. So if it's, um, you know, uh, comes into obstruction, then that would be a, a, a reserve. That's the only time if you find that, you know, some gyms where it, it's just not raised high enough. And if it contacts that and it would have been in play, uh, we use our judgment to, to, uh, to, to say that, you know what? They would have, uh, been successful to retrieve the ball and so would be a, a, a reserve at that point.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think I saw something on the lower picture, if it touches the frame. Uh, yeah, that's the same thing as, as the basket. So that whole, uh, basket structure, if it, if it contacts that. And yeah, they're gonna have to, it's not gonna come straight down in, in cases. So it might move and, you know, they're gonna have to run and see where that ball's going. Yes, that is, uh, that's legal.
Perfect, and then Carrie, are you still there? I'm not sure if she's still there. Um, there was just some questions around rationale about implementing it. Um, so it was a big ask that was sent through membership to our indoor volleyball development committee. Uh, once again, it's just about keeping the games going, uh, and the flowing. And especially when we don't always have the best facilities in place, um, across Ontario as our sport continues to grow. Um, it's just working with those challenges and letting them play the game. So that was the big rationale for them, um, to bring that in. I think, so thank you, Andy, for answering some of these questions while I was talking.
Yeah, there's a question about, um, in the chat about if I decide not to referee due to COVID. Do you have that in the agenda to cover later, Andrew?
Um, I do, but I'll just mention it, uh, mention it now. And so we had a, a blanket leave of absence for, uh, for, for last year for obvious reasons. And, uh, we will be, it's not going to be a blanket, uh, this year. Uh, you will need to go through your, uh, R R C. Uh, but, uh, if you choose, uh, not to, it's going to be, uh, approved just so that they are, um, aware. And so that they can, uh, keep track and send it on to the, uh, the O V A for tracking purposes. So we understand, uh, if it's whether you're, uh, not vaccinated and unable to referee at, at certain, um, uh, certain leagues. Or if the comfort level is not there, uh, then by all means, we will allow it. Uh, so that's, that's fine, that will not get, not get turned out. Alicia, was there anything else or should we move on?
Yep, sorry, I'm just reading through them all. There's a lot of comments going on. Um, if there's, there was ca- a question about if there are issues with protocols or COVID complaints, who to reach out. Just send them to the staff, say after the tournament, like you're here to referee the match. You're not here to justify or talk about government regulations or O V A return to play protocols. And just email info@OntarioVolleyball and it will be sent to their correct person.
Yeah, and just keep in mind, but that's also it. We're enforcing rules that are either the government regulations or that facility in order to rent the facility. So it's almost of, um, yeah, send them to your M P P, send them to your, so, um, it is government rules, um, and facility rules. So just, um, just to keep that in mind. Um, because and then if the people don't want to play, uh, under those rules, then they can't participate. Because we won't have any insurance, they'll be operating illegally and da, da, da. So that's, that's just something to kind of, if you want to try to stop them before it gets any further. It's like, we don't make the rules and neither does the O V A, we're just trying to follow them so we can operate.
Andrew, there was a few more questions still just about the, the ceiling rule in terms of, you know, the ball hanging up for several seconds. As in picture three, like at what point do you just call a reserve or what do you do with it? Um, I don't know, is there anything else you want to?
No, I mean, if it's, if, if it's sitting up there for a while and it, and it takes forever. Um, but, you know, e- essentially it's just going to hit and, and, and come down. But if it rolls around and it's, you know, again, and they're sitting there and they're waiting, then yeah, use your judgment, right? So this is, uh, it's the first time we're, we're experimenting now with it here in, uh, uh, in Ontario. So, uh, again, you, you can't go wrong, uh, use your, your best judgment.
Yeah, um, just question in terms of, um, if the ball goes straight up and hits the ceiling with a spin rate, then then takes the ball right to the net. Can it hit, be legally hit on the second ball for a point? Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
I also have a question too right above it.
Yep, if the ball touches the frame and goes straight out, that team loses the point, correct?
That's correct.
Can there be multiple contacts on the ceiling?
Yes, that's that pinball situation. Or if on the first contact, you can't, uh, um, use the ceiling to send the ball over the net, right? So on the third contact, you can't hit the ceiling and then it goes over the net, that's a fault. But if on the first contact hits the, hits the ceiling, um, and then, uh, hits the ceiling again. And then is played is legal. If it gets stuck, it's a reserve.
Ceiling is now the seventh man on the court. I'm kidding.
Exactly.
All right, sounds good. I think we will move on.
Okay, let's go on to the O U A and O C double A regulations. So Alicia had mentioned that we, uh, are meeting with, uh, Matt from the, uh, O U A tomorrow. Uh, we will get information on the, you know, the O C double A specific regulations later. We have not met with them, but they're not starting until, uh, the new year. But essentially they will be, um, following the lead of the O V A in terms of the, uh, the protocol remaining on the same side. Uh, referees that are wearing, uh, their mask throughout. Uh, there will be, uh, change rooms. I was, I was originally told that there will be change rooms for referees. We'll clarify that to make sure that that's the case, uh, for all, uh, all schools. Uh, so therefore one does not have to show up, uh, in their uniform if they choose not to. Um. What's, uh, so, so the same thing to, with the, with the coin toss. Uh, what we're going to do for the, um, uh, end of the match. So it's going to be like the international style where R one, uh, and this is the same for the O V A. Uh, R one will go to side A, R two will go to side B. Line judge one will go with, uh, behind, uh, R one. And line judge two will go behind, uh, referee R two at the end of the match. And then, you know, the, the teams, uh, line up and you're just sort of, uh, wave. So there's no, no handshake, uh, but the referees will go across the nets, uh, to the, uh, to the stand at the end of the match. Uh, at the beginning of the match, there won't be any, uh, handshakes again. So, you know, you play the national anthems, uh, play national anthem and then you just, um, wave. But, uh, we'll get, um, additional, uh, information on, uh, you know, any more, uh, protocols for that. You may notice right now that there's a three-hour gap, uh, be- between matches. So instead of, uh, double headers going at six and eight, there's right now slated for five and eight. That's another reason where we're, we're speaking with the convener tomorrow. Um, you know, I, I've indicated that that's, that, that's too much. I understand that they need to do what they need to do in terms of, uh, sanitizing. But if a match goes three straight and we're done in an hour and 15 minutes, to wait around an hour and 45 minutes, uh, is a long time. So, uh, fingers crossed, uh, that we'll get that changed. Uh, not only that, you know, if we're starting at five o'clock on a Friday, that means referees and, and scores are there at four o'clock. My suggestion would be that it's, it's going to only be half an hour. But again, wow, we'll, we'll update you, um, as that information, uh, comes in. You will notice there that, uh, R two will no longer mirror R one at the hand signal. This is something that has been going on, uh, internationally and pretty much throughout, uh, the world. Uh, we, there was reasons why we chose, uh, from a, a V C standpoint not to. Uh, it was more, uh, you know, getting referees, uh, in, into the match and for development purposes. But at the college and, and university level, you know, these are your experience level threes and, and, and higher. So you will not, um, mirror, uh, R one. Uh, the only time you're going to be signaling is if, uh, R two is the one that stops the play, stops the rally. Out of rotation, net fault, uh, centerline, uh, penetration, backcourt attack, those types of things. Then you indicate the default, wait for R one to signal team to serve. And then you will also, uh, indicate, uh, the side. Note, this is just college, university. It is not, uh, for O V A, high school or anything else, okay? Uh, even when it's O V A and there's two referees and it's three out of five and it's H U. No, this is strictly for college and university. I'm happy to report that, uh, we have removed that 50-kilometer bubble for the college and university. So that has come into effect, uh, this year. So there will not be that 50-kilometer bubble. So if you traveled and it was 60 kilometers, it was 10 kilometers at 29 and 30 cents. Uh, it's the, the full amount, college, university only. It, uh, this does not apply to the O V A. Uh, the penalty box has been, been removed. So if someone is expelled, so if someone, uh, is, uh, expelled, not disqualified, but expelled. Then they do not go to the penalty box, they leave the gym. So they'll go to their respective, uh, change room and then they can join at the end, at the next, uh, set. No change with the disqualification. If it is qualified, you're obviously, you leave the competition, uh, court. So it doesn't matter, this is player, coach, uh, no penalty box, they go to the change room. Okay, I think, uh, and any questions on that before we move on to the competition dates? We're good?
No, we're good.
Good, all right. Uh, so competition dates, you'll see a number of, uh, championship dates for 2022. Including OFSA, uh, both boys and girls. And we, we see where they are, uh, being held. Uh, O C double A, uh, location is, uh, to be determined at the, at this time. And the same with the, uh, O U A. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, with the O U A, there will not be a final four. Uh, the league will be playing, east will be playing east, west will be playing west. So there's no crossover in the league. Uh, essentially even the first, I think even the second round of playoffs, there won't be any crossover, uh, until the, uh, till the finals. So there will be no, uh, final four there. Uh, you see the dates for, uh, C C's and, uh, and U sports. Uh, we are not hosting, but we will be hosting, I think, uh, I believe it's next year. And then we have like two in 2024, 2025, but anyway, uh, nothing there. But those that are nominated for C C's, you will also notice that it's, uh, they've added an extra date. So it's a four-day, uh, event and not three days like the, uh, like U sports. Very excited with Ontario championships, unless we get shut down by the government, it is a go. So you have the dates there. You will notice that it's not just at Rim Park as we've been accustomed to having it over the last 12, 13 years or so. Uh, I know we, we missed out and having it, uh, at the inner care in, in, in 2020. Uh, but you see, it's going to be a combination of, uh, Rim Park and Paramount Fine Foods in, in Mississauga. We do not know the age groups at this, at this point, uh, in, in time. But, uh, we'll have that, uh, within the next, uh, month or so. And, uh, we'll get, uh, information out to the referees to, uh, start signing, signing you up. Uh, as we know that, you know, the season comes, uh, goes by quite quickly. From a national, uh, standpoint, uh, we're, we're back in, in Edmonton for the most part. Uh, so it will be that, uh, festival style over the, uh, May long weekend. And, uh, so that will be from for 15 to 18. And then, uh, as we've done previous years, uh, 14 year will be at, and in different, uh, uh, different provinces. We also will be having our, the, the Canada Games, uh, will be taking place, uh, next year as well. Uh, but, uh, no further details, that won't be until August, if I'm not mistaken, it's prior August. Any questions before we? Move on here?
Just a question if this PowerPoint will be available for everyone. So yes, we post all of the town hall session PowerPoints, um, on the website. Um, Mark Williamson, you just made me giggle by that note, don't distract me. Uh, getting private notes here, sorry guys. And, um, so yeah, so we'll post it on the website, but another good thought. Uh, I think we should also email all of this out to this, to the links to the video, um, and to the PowerPoint and F A Qs as well to all referees. Um, just so we can make sure everyone has access, uh, right away to all the stuff. So Calvin, add that to your to-do list, please. Um, question, Joanne, about, uh, Canada Cup, so the old national challenge cup. Volleyball Canada look at doing that again for the summer.
Um, yes, they do have that planned. Um, I'm trying to remember the dates and don't forget, it's also Canada Games in Niagara. Um, the new facility there. Um, we will get that out, so, but yes, there is a Canada Cup planned.
Question, sorry, on behalf of a member. Uh, what are we doing with the revenue neutral and for those who were selected to go last year, but obviously didn't because of COVID?
Uh, I don't have, I don't, I don't have the, the, the numbers, uh, yet. But I know that Scott McLean, uh, who is the chair of the National Referees Committee, has sent us an email. We'll be receiving information as to how many, uh, referees, how many spots that will. We'll be receiving information as to how many, uh, referees, how many spots that we'll have. Uh, I know in the past they have, uh, uh, you know, selected, allowed us to, to take 30. So with the, uh, you know, we already had those, um, 30 that were identified, uh, I guess in, in 2020. If that is directly the, the question, um, I would submit that they would be, uh, first on the, on the list. Don't want to disadvantage them as long as they are, uh, registered and, uh, and active.
Thank you, Andrew.
Question.
Uh, there was just a question about, uh, the rules and regulations being implemented at all levels, you know, between OVA and high school. Um, Joe, can you speak to any requirements that OFSA would have, um, as an association to follow OVA rules and regulations? I know, um, they have their committees that kind of trump some of the stuff that we do. Um, and don't always follow everything that we do, but yes, it would be much easier, but, uh, it's not always the case.
Oh, sorry. Would the question is about OFSA following or?
Yeah, with regards to certain rules only being implemented for either OVA or college, university, why can't they be implemented for all levels? I.e. high school, um, to match up with OVA.
We try. Um, we share with them, but, uh, yeah, they, they create their own rules. Um, even we have different rules from Volleyball Canada. So I mean, this is an ongoing thing. Um, so yes. A lot of them, um, we try to share to create some consistency for the athletes and the referees, but, um, it's up to them whether or not they accept it. Um, and I did, I just wanted to go back to the Canada Summer Games. Like, um, there's August 5th to the 13th for beach and August 14th to the 20th for indoor. But the Canada Cup, we'll have to get that info for off of LP. I can't seem to track it down.
Perfect. Thanks. All right, Andrew, Calvin.
All right. Was that something else coming through? Okay. All right. So some, uh, recognition here. Start off with, uh, with Sam, who was, uh, uh, golden at, uh, in, in, in Mexico, completed her FBB clinic and was awarded the R1 on the, on the gold match. So congratulations. There it goes out, uh, to Sumara. Got, uh, Guy Bradbury, who was also in, uh, in Mexico as the, uh, referee coach. And, uh, he was also earlier, uh, in Netherlands as a referee coach and, uh, and did some, uh, coaching, uh, via his home in Newfoundland for, uh, VNL. Uh, we also had, uh, Andy, that, uh, was, uh, R1 on the, uh, bronze medal match, uh, in Dominican Republic. And, uh, would have been R1 in the gold if, uh, Canada wasn't, uh, in there. And I also had an, an opportunity to follow suit with him, uh, in Dominican Republic, uh, on the women's side. Congrats, uh, goes out to Irina Zamboni. Uh, this is not necessarily public, uh, knowledge yet, but, um, she has been, uh, named or will be named, uh, uh, VC's, uh, uh, Chair of the, uh, Women's Referee, uh, Development, uh, Committee. She replaces, uh, Debbie Jackson, and will be replacing, uh, Debbie Jackson, who, uh, who started this, uh, this committee. So, um, that's great for, uh, Ontario. So congratulations to Irina. Uh, recognition, uh, this year for the five years of, of, of service, uh, Jason Dodd, uh, Matt Somerville, Teresa Vazari, uh, Daphne Chow and Blair McIntosh. I don't know if those two were on the call from, I mean, they're coaches, but also referees. So, uh, congratulations, uh, to the five winners there. Uh, the Diane Wood Special Achievement Award winners. So this is, uh, you know, 15 years. So we have, uh, Bob Rock, uh, Barbara Riggarbadi and Guy Bradbury. So congratulations. And Guy was also, uh, named the Dennis Palmeroy, for any of you who remember Dennis from Saskatchewan. Who was also once the, uh, the head of, uh, um, Canada, the National Officials Chair. Uh, he received the, the Leadership Award. So congratulations to those three individuals. And for the Award of Merit, um, Renzo Milan, uh, congratulations to Renzo. And also was a, a, a former, um, Provincial Officials Chair. And then we move on to the OVA Hall of Fame Class of, uh, 2021. And we have, uh, Bev Burrows out in Region Six in our Kingston area and, uh, and, uh, deal. So congratulations to, uh, these two gentlemen. I think it's very important that, you know, we are, are recognizing these individuals. Uh, we've got many referees that have put in, uh, many years and it's, uh, very much appreciated. Uh, for our level threes and, and above, you would have received an email from me months ago or, uh, or through the, uh, OVA, uh, regarding updating your, your bio. It's important that we have this, uh, information and we recognize all of your, your contributions. And this, uh, goes right along with our, uh, awards banquet. And for 2022, it's gonna be on, uh, June 4th and the location will be in, uh, Kitchener. So, um, look forward to, uh, to seeing everyone that can attend. Yeah. So we're at, uh, hour and, uh, 42 minutes. Uh, we knew this would be a pretty lengthy, uh, call. Um, again, really appreciate everyone for, for coming on and, and being with us, uh, you know, this evening. Uh, you know, fingers crossed that things go smoothly, but, uh, really it's about being, uh, being flexible, being, being patient. Uh, things are fluid. Uh, and so, you know, the OVA is, I think, has done a marvelous job in communicating. There have been countless town halls that they host on, on Mondays. Uh, and, and so it's not just for, for coaches and what have you. So referees have gone on there and to hear what's, what's happening. So I encourage you to continue and, uh, you know, come out and, and, and support and, and hear what's happening. Uh, all of these sessions are recorded and so you can go back in the archives and, and take a listen. Any final, uh, questions, comments before we close for this evening?
Nope. Uh, everyone's just saying thanks.
Wonderful. Well, uh, thank you. Thank you to, again, to the OVA. Thank you to the, the referee committee. Um, you know, really appreciate all of your, your hard work. Uh, look forward to seeing each and every one of you out on the courts, whether it's, uh, provincials, nationals or, or locally. So thanks again. Keep safe, be well, and, uh, we'll see you soon. Cheers and good night.